Good evening. I would like to call to order the Eastline Board of Finance special meeting. Today is Monday, April 11th, 2022, 7:00 PM. And let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Next item is delegations. If there is anyone here from the public who would like to speak to any item on the agenda tonight, now is their chance. Would anyone like to speak? Hearing none. Move forward to new business. So in terms of budget process, we have completed all of the departmental budget reviews, and we are here this evening to deliberate what changes we would like to make to either the town or Board of Ed proposed budgets. As a reminder, we can make line item changes to the town side of the budget, but can only make an overall Board of Budget change. So I just wanted to start off by saying that I am very appreciative of all the work done by the town and the Board of Ed in putting all the information together and doing the presentations to both the Board of Selectment and the Board of Finance. That meant a lot of evenings coming back to town after putting in a full day of work. I also wanted to compliment the Board of Finance members, you know, for their work this year, but also especially Richard, Peter, and John, who went through this process the last two years during COVID using Zoom. I'm sure that made it an incredibly difficult process, just even managing the Zoom. And I just think that, you know, you guys all did a great job steering everybody through that. So hopefully, we can be as efficient and as collaborative as you guys all were last year. So basically, as I had discussed with the team here before, what we wanted to do is start off with the Board of Ed budget and open it up to all of the Board of Finance members to discuss whatever changes that they would like to do. And then if we can come to a vote on that, then we could then move forward with the rest of the town budget and the Board of Ed members that are here would be free to get home early. So with that, you know, one thing I noticed, last year, Rich, you were the last one to speak about. Oh, I'm sorry, not Rich, Peter. I think Peter, you were the last one to speak. And so I thought I might throw it open to you and say, do you want to reverse it? And would you like to start off with any of your thoughts about the Board of Ed budget?
I've been struggling with this because I think the Board of Ed did a really good job of, you know, coming up with a budget that met the increasing needs with the schools. And I appreciate the increasing needs that the schools have had over the last couple of years compounded by COVID and trying to meet the needs of students, which I think they do a really good job of. I participated in some of the meetings.
Workshops.
Workshops, I'm sorry, that was what I was looking for. And was very impressed with the challenges out there in terms of the impact that COVID had on the student body. And particularly, and also with the salary challenges that, you know, Eastline has a very good and positive reputation. People like to come to work for that. And our need to make our salaries more competitive and compounded with the inflation and minimum wages going up, which has a ripple effect on salaries. So I think it's a tough, tough challenge. And I think you did a really good job in coming up with a budget that manages that. My challenge is looking at the overall increase in terms of what that does on the mill rate and taxes. And I am still very concerned about that. And I don't know that I have all the answers in my upfront speech, but that's what I'm looking at, is the impact of that. I mean, I get the challenge, I understand it. But I also have to see it from the other side in terms of the overall increase on the budget and how to mitigate that. So that's kind of what my struggle is. It's not that, I'm not, I understand the budget, I think you did a great job on it, I just don't know how to, I have to look at the other side as well. So, from 10,000 feet.
John, as you can see, I'm starting with our seasoned Board of Finance member. So, John, would you like to?
I agree with Pete. It's been a struggle trying to drill down on the budget that you presented. I just had a couple of questions before I start. On your budget recommendation of the $2.4 million, of that number, how much, if any, of ARP money was in that increase?
We're using eight, I think it was 840,000.
I realize that, but of the total $2.4 million.
There's no other dollars are in the?
There's no ARP or ESSA funds in?
No, not, we applied 840, it was $840,000 of ARPS towards next year's additional support. That's the remaining money we have left.
Right, but that came out of ARP money.
ARPS, yes.
So in your budget, disregard ARP and ESSA funds.
Yep.
And that increase on top of your present budget, which is $2.4 million, is there any funding from ARP or ESSA in that $2.4?
No.
No?
No.
I believe it was in 180,000 of those jobs from, that were previously funded through the R program were plugged into this budget.
Let's, yeah, let's just clarify what you're, how you.
Are you asking of the increase that we have, positions that we have last year, how many that were funded by ARP in this current year are in next year's budget? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, ARP.
So, all right.
So it's the math coach?
We'd have to look at.
Yes.
Do we have a sheet?
You can ask the numbers.
Yeah, let's see if we can look it up, John, to see.
The other question I had was, on your salaries and benefits, have you ever hired a consultant to look at those salaries and benefits to see if they're in line with what they should be, if they're too low or too high?
That through the negotiation process, and those that have partaken in that, our attorney runs all the comps for all the areas.
You don't have an outside consultant come in and look at your salary and benefit type?
Not an outside consultant. No, no. Our attorney runs all the comps related to what others in the area, other districts are receiving for salaries, et cetera.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, maybe one of the questions is just right in, in the very beginning, in the summary by Object Code, in the description under 101, it references previously funded by an R ESSA grant. And then in Object Code 111, also says previously funded by grants now being funded in the operating budget. So it could be that, are those the two lines you guys were thinking of?
So I don't know if this is working or not.
Come on up. So we moved a math coach that was previously funded. So again, roughly around $90,000. A math coach, roughly around $90,000. But that position that we moved in was offset by a position that we're not filling. So net impact is zero, but that is an amount that was moved into the budget. We moved an elementary school teacher that was funded, no, the elementary school is just.
Elementary school psychologist.
Yeah, the school psychologist, point two of a school psychologist. So that is not really being offset by anything. So that's around 17,000 or 18,000. And then the .5 MTSS administrator. And then a .5 MTSS administrator, it was funded as a 1.0 position, but we've reduced it to a .5, and that has been put in our operating budget, and that's around $65,000.
We've also made a number of reductions on the other side, too. At the middle school level specifically, one, two, three, four, five, six reductions. And out of that six, three were eliminated, and three have been moved to different positions.
And then we have another two positions at the high school that were funded by the grant last year. They were, they are moved into the operating budget, but we are reducing two teachers at the high school. So it washes. Is that, is that your answer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Just a couple of things. Like Peter said, we try to see your side of it. Because I know you put a lot of time in like we did, probably even more so. One of the things I looked at on the public side, the taxpayer's side, was in 2015, the population of Eastline was 19,500, give or take. This year, the population is 18,600, again, give or takes. So the population in those years has been decreasing, which coordinates with a decrease in student population. So one of my concerns is that every year for a few years now, the school budget has been creeping up and up while the population in public and in the students has been decreasing. Increasing taxes over the years cannot be sustainable. It has to stop somewhere. And I realize a lot of people move to town because of the school system, and you're doing your best job to maintain the quality of education that people are looking for. But we on the Finance Board also have to consider the senior citizens and the other people who may be out of work and can't afford the taxes in town anymore. Because when I, when I was still working at the pharmacy, people would come in to me, mainly elderly, and saying, you have to do something about the taxes in this town. I'm going to have to sell my house and move. I just can't stay here anymore. And so for us to look at your budget, I think it's a little high. And the reason I say that is I looked at eight school districts near to us. One school district was negative .13% on the budget. Another was a little higher than your budget, it was like 4.9, I'm going to say, 4.88. So I threw those two out. The other six ran from 2.2 to 3%. And the average for those six was 2.56. So when we get to numbers, I'm going to tell you how I got to the numbers that I'm going to recommend as far as your increase in your spending on the budget. With that being said, I'd like to hear what the rest of the board has to say.
All right. Richard?
We're faced with, with kind of almost a Solomon's Choice here with the budgets this year, both on the town side and the Board of Ed, that in addition to the increases in the budgets, we've also got a reevaluation that has occurred this year. So there's a potential that people might see something different in their taxes. And it makes it a little bit more challenging on our side to try to figure out how much of an increase that we build into the budgets that, what kind of impact that will have on the community. It was a little bit easier in the years previous because we, we knew the mill rate that we had going into the salary or the budget discussions could be, you know, taken historically and be able to kind of figure out what the increase this will be and, and how much of an increase would be, how much of a mill rate increase and translate to such and such a tax increase. This year, we've got a more challenging situation. It's also challenging that, both on the town side and the school side, where we're seeing large increases in the budget. And as my fellow board members have already stated, I don't know that it's sustainable to go that high. Something that we had looked at in the past, as John just mentioned, was comparisons to other school districts and also comparisons to other towns as to, you know, who's, who's going up and by how much. There's a lot of different factors that factor into that. And so it's not necessarily comparing apples to apples. It's, it's easy to say somebody had a 7% increase, somebody had a 4%, somebody had a 3%, somebody actually lost. But I think we need to look at aspects of the budget that directly impact the students. And I don't know how mu, it's, it's difficult to read from the budget booklets and the presentation just how much is not directly impacting students and how much is in other programs. I would wish that in the future, that could maybe be a little bit more clearly delineated so that we can see for the budget increases that we're providing to the Board of Ed and the schools that we know direct impact for the students. And a lot of the questions I've been directing to, to Mr. Newton and to Annalise have been regarding the coaching programs. And I tip my hat to you guys for seeing an issue and trying to address the changes in scores and trying to impact them upward. But I'm not so sure that now is a time to go full-fledged into a pilot program. And I think we went full tilt, we discussed this a lot last year. And I think our feeling on the board was to kind of step into the waters gently. But it seems like the schools went full tilt on that. And I asked about the literacy specialists. I thought that they had been coaching, but I guess not from the response that I got. But still, I would have liked to have seen how our literacy specialists impacted the literacy scores over the last few years. And then there was another thing in terms of, I know the baseball field needed to get fixed, but was that the highest priority in the midst of a pandemic to go for that? And that originally was stated last year to be $150,000. And from what I understand from board meetings, was it ended up going up to $230,000. And I think that does not directly impact all of our students in town. And so I face a dilemma. I support the schools, I had been on the Board of Ed about a decade ago with Kevin, and I understand the needs that are there. But as a town, I just don't know that we can afford this kind of an increase again.
Thank you, Richard. Paul, do you want to make any comments here?
Yeah, my concerns, being a newbie here, I wish I had more time to, from the time we got this, to digest, you know, more the numbers. I just feel that if this, the budget as it stands right now went to referendum, it wouldn't pass. That's my, you know, that's the way I feel. But I was also concerned with that, I know the Board of Ed and the, did a lot of work on the budget, didn't, I know two of the members didn't, couldn't even make up a decision one way or the other on it, which I found a little bit, you know, troubling that they, I mean, once somebody said it was, their head was spinning. So somebody that's involved in this is saying that, can imagine what, what we're going through. Because we didn't get into that much detail, but I just, you know, I kind of have to echo a lot of what Rich has said, is that, you know, we got, we got to kind of look at just, you know, job here is to educate our children. We're not, we can't do everything, everything for them. Some things have to be done at home, or, you know, some things, some things we just can't do, we can't afford. But I don't know how we're going to get there. But I think, like I said, I think we got, we got some work to do here.
Thank you. So I echo the thoughts shared already. I'm a product of Eastline Schools, so I'm deeply grateful for the schools and committed to making sure that we're doing best for our students and our town. And I know that a significant amount of time went into the budget. But I do agree that there is another side. And I'm hopeful that we can find a compromise. And I think Rich's points about what's directly impacting our students now, what can we prioritize while also balancing the needs of our taxpayers? I'm hoping that we can deliberate tonight. And I'm interested to hear some of the recommendations from fellow board members, because I also was really grappling, because I understand there is an incredible amount of need. And we did see exciting growth from students based off of pilot programs and what was implemented last year. So I want to acknowledge that while also recognizing the challenges that many people in our town are currently facing.
Okay. So I'm definitely sensing a concern everywhere about the size of the increase. You know, as I, I was kind of looking back and watching, you know, previous meetings and, you know, there was a lot of uncertainty over the last two budget years with COVID. You know, nobody knew what the ramifications were going to be, what was going to happen to the economy, how the schools were going to function, you know, whether things were going to get better or worse last year, and all of that, you know, how impacted, you know, putting a budget together. I feel like today, we've got a little bit better knowledge of the situation we're in. I think people are a little bit more of, we're going to have to learn to live with COVID. And hopefully, you know, the seriousness continues to, you know, be reduced, and it's more like the flu that we all deal with all the time. But we also have a better knowledge of what COVID did to the economy, and as well as, you know, the different national policies that have been in place. And unfortunately, the impact of inflation on this budget is really considerable. Gas prices have increased 40% year over year as of February. The CPI, the Consumer Price Index, was up 7.9% as of February. We'll see March's number tomorrow morning. We have not been in this type of inflationary environment for 40 years. And it's just a huge cost on operating the town and the Board of Ed, but it also has a huge impact on our residents, especially those with fixed income. Social Security payments have increased, but the cost of food and energy have completely outpaced that increase. So, you know, I think many of us are making daily decisions in our lives. We're eating out less, we're buying generic versus brand name items, we're limiting our driving, we're being more thoughtful and going out and doing all of those errands. We're delaying large purchases and literally doing everything we can to save money. So I think what we're here to do tonight is, you know, ask not only the town, but the Board of Ed to understand that we need to do the same with their budgets to help alleviate the burden to our residents. So, you know, again, Jeff, Mariana, I really, I appreciate all of your patience with our questions, your cooperation as we work through this. But the budget did call for an increase of almost $2.4 million or 4.59% over last year. So I also recognize that both the Board of Ed and the town are subject to constraints in terms of the levers over which we have control. As long as we have collective bargaining of public sector, union contracts, those are going to greatly inhibit our ability to control those salary and benefits. You know, once a position gets added, those automatic increases kick in every year. And the budget just keeps growing. And, you know, as everyone's saying, it's just not sustainable to completely, you know, just every year have that budget go up. So, so that's why it's really imperative that we are very cautious whenever we add to staff. You know, I also looked, you know, in the paper and looked at other towns to see what they were doing. And most of the ones I saw, you know, had a three handle increase, other than a few outliers like Canaan or whatever. I think we saw a three and a half at Weathersfield, 3.83 in Bristol, 3.73 in East Haven, 3.95 in Darien. So, you know, I just felt like that 4.59 was more of an outlier to the top. So of course, you know, any reduction in your proposed increase is up to you and the Board of Ed to implement. So I don't think it's appropriate for me to give a detailed suggestion on what you should, what should be cut. But from a very high level, I have to admit that I was concerned with the coach, coaching model. I listened to what everyone was saying in last year's budget about it. And I'm, I'm just afraid that the cost of that whole model is, you know, is it appropriate for the number of students that it's actually helping? You know, trying to, you know, figure out bang for your buck. And, you know, I also, you know, look at the focus on social and emotional learning. I know this is a real concern for everyone, especially with the, you know, being out of school for a year and coming back. I've heard all of those issues. And, and I definitely understand the cost avoidance that, that you feel that we are benefiting from, from those two areas. I just, you know, I don't know enough to say that those monies spent are, are the best way to do it. And whether there aren't some more creative ways that we could limit that expenditure and still help our students.
Denise, can I just share one thought?
Sure, absolutely.
Just to be clear, I'm sure maybe you already know this, all of you, that ARP funding, just keep in mind, every district received different amounts. Eastline was on the lower end compared to other districts. Many of them are applying millions of dollars to next year's budget to help out. I can tell you, there's one near us that is applying about 1.7 million. I'm not going to name the district. But that directly lowers their overall increase. So I just wanted to make that, that point.
Good point, valid point. I appreciate that. You know, I think the other thing that I heard last year was the chair sort of intimated that the, the next year's budget increase wasn't going to be as large because a plan was in place to make sure that the, the decrease in the ARP money wasn't going to end up. the, the decrease in the ARP money wasn't going to end up impacting the following year's budget. And so, you know, we weren't going to see a big increase. And yet, you know, I feel like here we are at that 4.59%. So, you know, I'm trying to balance the needs and wants of the 27% of the town's families that have children in the school, the 63% that don't, and the needs and wants of the 39% of our residents that are over the age of 55. You know, we heard about, you know, the demand for services for seniors. You know, I read in The Current today about all the baby boomers that are homeless now because of, you know, the effects of COVID and rising rent costs, you know, just pricing them out of their apartments. So, I just, I think we're going to see a lot of, you know, needs on, on that end of our people that we're trying to help with this budget. But I'm also very cognizant of how complimentary everybody is about the school system, what a great job we're doing. And a great school system is, you know, that's reflected in our property values. And so, it's, it's important that we do that and maintain that, you know, high level of education so that people, you know, want to come and, and live here, which of course is such a beautiful town, everybody wants to come and live here. But all of this, it's like everyone's saying, it's such a balancing act of trying to make sure that we're taking care of, you know, the young and the old alike. So, so that's, that's sort of where I am. And I think everybody's been a little bit reluctant to throw any kind of a number out. So, I just, you know, started looking at some numbers and, you know, said, okay, if I had a goal to make sure that the overall mil rate increase didn't exceed 1 mil, and I realized with revale, you know, the mil's going to change, but there should also, you know, be some proportion to how it changes. So, the equation does get a little bit complicated, but I think we can use that 2.7 million equals 1 mil. So, if I didn't want to increase that budget by more than 1 mil, I would want to see the whole town, the town and Board of Ed come in at an increase less than that. But there's still a bunch of moving parts, so this, you know, gets a little bit tricky. We're still waiting on the final results of the Board of Assessment Appeals. We're waiting on what the state health number is going to be. We still have some contracts that are going to be negotiated that is going to go into the overall, you know, it's, right now it's in our contingency, but as we move forward with those, we'll, we'll get more information. But if we looked at it right now and based the, the estimated taxes needed to raise the funds in the proposed budget, we can estimate the mil rate could drop from 28.51 to 24.38. But the other thing that's happening with revale is that we're seeing a shift in the tax burden. As the single-family homes increased 24%, condos increased 16%, two- and three-family homes increased 23%, apartments 15%, and commercial property increased 18%. So, once that mil rate is established, you know, it doesn't mean that everything is proportional because of that shift away from commercial value to, and, and taxes to single-family homes. So, that's still another impact, because I'm sure there's a lot of single-family homes and two-in-family homes that have, you know, kids in the schools, and, you know, it's, if that's where the burden is going to be. But I just want to make sure I warn the public, you can't take those averages and apply it to your new assessment, because, you know, everybody's property didn't, you know, didn't go up by 24%, so it, it's up and down. So, we're going to have to wait to get those final numbers, and then whatever we take actions tonight on, on both the town and the board, we'll go into that. So, you know, I'll just tell you the numbers that, that I looked at and as maybe a starting place that we can discuss with everybody. So, I did an estimate of what I thought we could reduce the town budget by after our deliberations there. And, and then I looked for a reduction in the Board of Ed to reflect not only those concerns I spoke about earlier, but also the fact that they're 67% of the entire budget. If we reduce the total town budget by 200,000, making it a 3.15% increase, and the Board of Ed budget by 500,000, or a 3.64% increase, which seemed in line with a lot of the towns that I looked at, that would bring the total town and Board of Ed increase to 2,711,000. So, just under 1 mil and a 3.48% overall increase. So, you know, then, then, just to kind of set the table on what 1 mil would do and what it would do to those two budgets. And that doesn't have to say, it's not, we don't come back and say, okay, it's 300 on the Board of Ed and, you know, 500 on, on the town. But, you know, just given the overall size of those budgets, I, I thought that those were a good place to start on that. And then, given that it's also the bigger part of the budget, you know, if we can get to a point on the Board of Ed, and then from that point on, we can then move to the town side. So, given that I've thrown up a, a number, I'd love to hear what my fellow Board of Finance members think about that number, whether a 1% mil increase is doable. I mean, ideally, I'd love to have it less than that, but I also, like I said, value, you know, the exceptional school system we have. So, trying to, trying to keep those two things in, in mind.
I guess I'll take over.
Go ahead.
The reason I asked about the consultant earlier was I was looking at the salaries and benefits. And although it's, it, the total increase is 3.54%, it's like dollars and cents, it's $1,163.769. I think the, that number is for salaries is a little high than 1 million. I think over the years, the increase in salaries and benefits has been a little heavily weighted. So, I'm not going to go into specifics, but when I looked at all the different line items, salaries plus benefits, I came up with a reduction of $365,650. Now, added to that, I, when I mentioned, I looked at nearby towns, I looked at ones close to us, Waterford, London, Norwich, Ledge, Stoneton, and Grotton. Those are the ones that went from 2.2% to 3% increase. So, what I did was I averaged the six, and it came out to be 2.56%. And dollars and cents, that decrease would be 1, 1,000,000.05. So, that was the 2.59, which is close to the 2.56, that's what I used. So, what I did was I added that decrease of 1,000,000.05 to the six, three, uh, the, hold on a minute, to the 655, 650, and divided that in half, and it came out to about 852,825, a reduction on your 2.4 million. So, that's where I stand at the moment as far as the Board of Ed budget. It decreased the 2.4 million by 852,825. I tried to look, look it from two directions, one from, when I looked over the budget in what I thought was a little high. And then when I looked at the six other towns where they came in, they all came in around 2.5, 2.6. And taking into consideration what Jeff said about ARP, that, you know, some of these figures might be lower because they use the money to reduce their budget. But taking the six towns in that bracket of 2.2 to 3, I can't see how the Board of Ed and Eastlime came out with 4.59, which is like almost twice of what everybody else is. So, that's how I came out with the $835,000.
852. 852?
852, 829.
Okay. Anyone else want to share their numerical thoughts?
I, I, I can.
Okay.
For both the, the town and the Board of Ed, ideally, I'd like to see a 3% increase, but I, I realize that, that may be kind of draconian, so I, I could be persuaded to kind of have a little higher increase than that. And for, for the town, for the, the 3%, the reduction to end up with 3%, I was looking at the number of the budget that was the line item above where our debt service took place. Because that, to me, reflected the true increase of the town budget. So, that was at a 5% rate. And i-if I go to a 3% from 5% increase, that'd be 390,000 to 400,000 from the town side, which, looking through the town budget, it, it's really difficult to see getting there.
And it just, and I also think, you know, there's things that you just, you know, our debt service is our debt service.
Right.
You know, we can't say, oh, you know, sorry, we're going to cut down, so.
Right.
So.
Right. No, I, and I'm just bringing that up because the, the schools don't have that luxury to have that line item bring down their increase.
Right.
So, that their increase was actually less than what the operating budget for the town was. Just to put that out there for the public to hear. But with that said, you know, I, I still, I would like to see more direct service from the, the coaching model, or however you want to call it. And maybe that, that could change the number of positions that are, are needed because the model is a 70/30. That, you know, it's 70 coaching and 30 for direct intervention. And granted, it's too early to tell the impact of these programs. But a-again, I think in a budget, budgetarily restrained environment, yeah, you guys went full tilt and tried to service it all. But maybe scale it back this next year and be able to generate the data that things could be shifted a little bit more. If you go with a draconian reduction to a, a 3% increase from the 4.59, that'd be about an $830,000 cut, which is close to John's figure. Denise, I, I kind of like the, the figures that, that you threw out there just because both the town and the schools' budgets, there, there's an awful lot of required items that are there. And I'm hoping that we, we have a, a healthy undesignated fund balance, that we can increase what we take from that above what the Board of Selectmen had suggested, and find some savings in the town budget, but with using the undesignated fund balance, actually keep our mil rate increase below a percent. So, I, I'm throwing out high numbers for, for reductions, just to kind of work to a, a more even feel on things.
And, and I just, you know, the number I threw out was to just kind of give a baseline of this is, you know, so, you know, this is what it means in terms of dollar and percentages, so.
Right.
To kind of level set everyone.
Right.
So, I'm always for saving money, so. Paul, any thoughts on where you would be?
Yeah, my, my goal, I, I, going into the process, I wanted to see a mil rate, you know, maybe a half a mil increase, you know, 3/4 of a mil was my limit, which got us up to about a million dollars of a, a reduction. But then, as Rich said, we are having a, you know, good year with, on the revenue wise, and there should be some, hopefully, an opportunity for some fund balance relief so we don't have to go, go that high. But, I mean, your numbers are probably lower than I would go, but I think that's a good start.
So, do you want to modify your million, or you're staying with it?
No, that's where I started. I, I, I was looking for about another $250,000, hopefully from fund balance or a transfer from the, you know, current year, different year. So, I was looking like, you know, 750 was where I was.
Okay.
And I was looking at.
What do you think, Peter?
I want to, I want to be under a mil. And I think we have some found money, I think we, and I'm not clear on where the money for the tax sale is landing in the budget, and if that can help offset some of this, I mean, I'm, I'm.
Anna's got some information, you know, can share what we've, we've gotten, over $660,000 in unanticipated.
Right.
And that's kind of going up on a daily basis. The tax sale is a week from Thursday. So, we'll have a bet, prior to your public hearing, we'll have a much better idea where we stand for revenue from that.
Where does it land in the budget?
Well, that's in, that's in this year's budget, so that would be basically the, that's what I'm saying, the fund balance.
Prior to taxes and interest.
Well, prior, yeah, prior to taxes and interest, so, you know.
So, it goes into the undesignedated fund.
It would, if at the end of the year it's not used.
So, if we can draw from the undesignedated fund, looking at that as sort, you know, balancing it out, I mean, that's kind of.
And, and we're over, I think, last I checked, Anna, if I'm correct before, anticipated revenue from tax invasions, I think we're $450,000 above where we thought we would be for the. I think we're four hundred and fifty thousand above where we thought we would be, uh, for the year. You know, very much enhanced by the sale of, uh, the Gateway.
Right, right.
If they do it again before the end of the year, that would be even better, but that's not gonna happen, you know.
I thought it's four, you said four fifty, not three, I thought.
Yeah, no, it, no, it's that, but that was aided, that four fifty overage from where we anticipated being was because we got three hundred and fifty-two from the sale of-
That's what the number called.
And, you know, we will get a little bit more in that account too, but that, nothing of that nature.
I think, you know, one of the things that, you know, having dealt with rating agencies, lots of times they're looking to see, are, you know, are they using these one-time events to, you know, fill budget gaps and, 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 you know, I also worry then, when you, when you rely on that, you then have level set the budget to, you know, this level and next year, you know, it's gonna go up again. So as much as it's gratifying that we have a couple of these, you know, one-time windfalls, I, I hate to make budget decisions that, you know, could end up. And, and, you know, again, kudos to everything, uh, the town has done to increase that undesignedated fund balance up to, you know, fifteen percent. And, um, you know, that's a, a very healthy number. Um, I think it's going to stand us in good stead next time we have a chance to get in front of the rating agencies, because then, then is a, a good number. And, and, but frankly, if, you know, it goes too much higher, then you're saying you're overtaxing your, your residents too. So it's like you wanna-
Well, if I might add, I think too, this would be a, you know, if there is a time to do it, this would be, we've seen a shift in, uh, as you pointed out, the shift from, uh, commercial to residential, a little bit of a shift there. And a lot of uncertain times, a lot of challenges with inflation at, this is, I think, a time where, you know, here again, we'll always do the best we can with the resources provided, as I've always said, but maybe to use a little bit at to help cushion the impact on, uh, the taxpayer.
And is there a number, Kevin, that you feel is appropriate to use to offset?
Well, we're, we've got five hundred thousand all right, correct right now, correct, Anna? Uh, with, if we realize the, uh, resources we see in, uh, the, uh, that are still outstanding, that we anticipate getting something, I, you know, here again, I wouldn't mind seeing that double to a million. Because I, you know, here again, this would be, it would still allow some, still an increase in the, uh, undesignedated fund balance, but it would let us be able to use a, a, an amount to help offset that, uh, impact to the taxpayers for just this one time. I mean, if it was just the revolve, but there's so many other things, the, the inflation that we have not seen in, you know, since, in, in forty-plus years, uh, things like that. I mean, there's so many fixed costs. I mean, our electric, uh, cost for, uh, heat and electricity, fuel and so forth like that, we're feeling the impact of that. Um, so that's why I think if, you know, but here again, we'll know a whole lot more after next, uh, oh, the twenty-first. Anna, what's the still outstanding balance?
So, um, the, you know, the tax collector updated the number, you know, the numbers through the end of this month and that it's a little over one point two million dollars. We currently know that we have, uh, there are three properties that are part of the tax sale that are under contract. They sold and that, that totals a little over ninety-seven thousand. And then today they did receive payment on, um, another account, uh, just under nineteen thousand. That, that, the person actually paid at the end of, um, at the end of March and we received the funds today. So there's a little bit of lag time between when the attorney that's handling this for us, um, receives the funds and, and they actually get to the town. So with that said, there's still about one point one million, um, outstanding for the tax sale. And of course, up until the tax sale, we may continue to get, uh, some of the outstanding balances taken care of. So it's still a substantial, um, amount.
And, and our undesignedated fund balance over the last several years has shown steady growth. And I, it would still show some growth this year, so I think, you know, and I think that's what some of the, the people would be looking at too. You're not showing just this one-time bubble, you're seeing steady, steady progress. So I, you know, and I think we could articulate the need for what, you know, maybe utilizing a little bit more of that to ease the burden on our taxpayers for next year.
Okay. Of course, now turning that equation around to, you know, how to apply that to the town or the Board of Ed potential de- decrease, I guess, would then be the, the challenge too, because part of that, we're not, it's not assured, you know, though we're still waiting on things, so it's a-
Well, if you're looking for, you know, I, I think you've all articulated where you, we stand on things and, like I said, you know, you know, if you want to move forward, then we can, you know, talk about, you know, I know where I would focus it on and so forth like that. You know, because I told department heads and that, that prepare for, you know, there might be some cuts coming. So we've worked out, you know, what to do if that comes up and try and minimize the impact it would have on not only services to the town, but, you know, to employees and our taxpayers and residents.
Okay, so. Paul, do you have any number that you're willing to share with those staff? Cause-
My number, I think, I feel your numbers were fair, Denise, that you threw out initially, the five hundred thousand, the two hundred thousand. That feels fair and in line with our objective of balancing between the Board of Ed, the town, the taxpayers. I also think where I struggle with Board of Ed is I'm not on the ground at the schools and, and I, I do think the numbers, the comparisons are helpful from other towns, but I do worry a little bit, because I don't know that we have the full context of those numbers, um, to Jeff's point. And I also think that, you know, our district may be facing certain needs that other, other districts might not. So I, I feel like that initial number that you threw out, it feels fair to me and definitely willing to deliberate, uh, but that's where I'm landing.
Mm-hmm. And actually, Peter, I, I think I, I moved on from you before you actually cut.
Yeah, I'm working to be under a mill. You know, that's, that's my thing and then like-
I, I think I'm in the vicinity of where Paul had mentioned about point seven five. I mean, we've had some really good years of low increases and I think people, you know, the one thing is I, I think if you articulate the need for why it's a little higher this year, I think people are okay with that. As far as, you know, a lot of people, I mean, there's, there's some that won't, and some people just think, well, you know, it's an affluent town, let's spend more, but that doesn't, you know, apply to everybody. But I think somewhere point seven five, not much above that. I'd love to say point five, but, you know.
So that would be about two million fifty thousand in an overall decrease?
If, yeah, at a, at point seven five. But like I said, no, between, I would say between point seven five and then the one.
Okay. So if we were to try to decrease the overall budget, I'm just gonna say two million, then and if we thought that the town side, you know.
We could. Well, I-
To pondered and then? I see some. So you'd really be looking for another, like, seven hundred thousand on top of my baseline of two hundred and five hundred, right?
Yeah, and well, I think I identified where five hundred possibly come from under, you know, under the fund and, you know.
Well, if I could say, I think
Sure.
we're almost put in the cart before the horse now. We haven't even gone through the town budget.
Right, yeah.
And you're deciding how much you want to cut the town budget by without going through the line items?
I, I agree, I'm just-
We're starting to discuss how much of the undesignedated fund balance to use when we haven't even gotten to a figure where we need to decide how much we want to try to decrease the mill rate increase?
I agree. I think, you know, part of it was just, I was looking at the respective sizes of the two budgets and so, so.
Right.
And, you know, what might be attainable if we were to try to hit that target of, you know, less than a mill. So it is, you know, this is the tricky part of, um, trying to wrap up one side of the budget before going through the other, but you kind of have to start somewhere. And you're, you're trying to arrive at the final result, backing into one side of it, that's all. So, um, so I think that, um, you know, as much as-
If you, if you want to go, we can go through-
That's what I was just gonna say, as much as I wanted to let these guys go, I, you know, I think it's a, it's a good point, Richard, and maybe we can, um, I mean, we've, we've all spent a lot of time with, with the town side of the budget. So I think we probably could focus on the town pretty quickly and come up with some agreement there. Okay. So with that in mind.
So I, I guess, are we going to decide on the amount for the Board of Ed now or after?
No, I think if, if we, if we go through the, um, the town side of budget right now, and I, I think because we are so familiar with each of the departments, I think we would be able to arrive at a number for that, which would then, you know, help us get to the Board of Ed side.
Okay.
Does that, so that everyone feel good about that?
Yep. It's hard, I just want to know our process here.
Yeah, yeah, it's, again, it's tricky, because we're trying to, we're trying to get to a final number, but also I was trying to think about your evening, sorry. Okay. So, um, you know what, I'd suggest we just start right off with, um, Department one oh one or Selectmen. You know, so one of, one of the things that was discussed, um, with the Board of Selectmen and, um, you know, we kind of touched on, there's an increase in the first selectmen salary in here of, of three thousand dollars. The, that's not a big number, but wanna, would you like to?
Yeah, um, that would be in addition to whatever GWI would be done, the board, a couple of members felt. The Board of Selectmen's salary is about thirty thousand less than what it was ten years ago, because, uh, previously it had been reduced by the previous first selectmen for savings and so forth like that. And the thought was we need to bring it back up, which I agree with. But we're looking at, um, the fact that to get it back there, we can't, it'll take years to do that. I think that's something we're planning on, uh, and, you know, the, the July or August is appointing a charter revision committee. I think that would be a better discussion for that group. It's not much money, but I have no problem with that three thou, I'll offer, I'll make the first offer there. That would be three thousand to get it started. So I don't have any problem with that.
And I think under charter revision, that would, you know, you could look to see, you know, the role of the first selectmen and responsibilities and-
That's where, and I think that's what you have to- Yeah, because there's been talk about first selectman time manager. Let it be resolved then, rather than in the middle of a term, uh, adjust the salary. And if you keep doing it like three, it would just take so long to get it up to where it was or to where it would be comparable. So I think start off by doing that, so.
Well, that's generous of you.
I don't mind missing another vacation. I'm only joking about that, but, you know, not at all, but. I have no problem with that.
All right, so, um, I'd entertain a motion to reduce the, um, one eleven first selectmen proposed, um, down three thousand.
That was too quick for me, Rich.
All those in favor?
That was very quick.
Well, I just heard by what you had proposed.
Any opposed? Any abstains? Motion carries. Six zero zero.
No diapers for the kid.
Any other changes to, there's not a lot of other, it's mostly. Anyone else who changed to that budget? Okay. One oh two, Town Assessor's Office.
Denise, I have a question with the assessor. The ten thousand dollar increase, is that, Kevin, is that step increases as well as?
No, that was worked out with the previous, uh, administration to give her an increase.
Okay, so another contract that was signed.
Yeah, and adjusted it.
Ahead of time. Okay. So that, that, we can't do anything of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone have anything that they want to do to the assessors? No? Move on to the tax collector. This was actually a negative, um, uh, less money spent, proposed than last year. I didn't have any changes. Anyone?
No.
Okay. So next is, uh, one oh four building.
I'll, for this, uh, with the departure, would, I'd like to offer the, uh, building official, uh, reduce that by, uh, from eighty-nine, seven nine nine, reduce that by twenty-five hundred, because we'll be hiring someone new and obviously not at the same rate. But I want to keep, I want to keep enough money there to make sure it's competitive, so a reduction of twenty-five hundred there.
Okay. Anyone disagree with that? Do I have a motion to reduce, um, Department two eleven by twenty-five hundred dollars? In the building, line item. Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Six zero zero.
And then also, open.
Yeah, you, you had mentioned last meeting that the building permit software is a reduction to twenty-five hundred from ten thousand?
Yeah, I would be very comfortable with that, seventy-five hundred reduction there, because we'll have a new building official coming in. Let him get a feel of the groundwork and so forth like that and then move forward once, you know, he has a chance to do that. So I don't want to, you know, we need to save every money, every bit we can, so I reduce that to twenty-five hundred, so it allows some, uh, movement, but we can save that.
So we're reducing it by twenty-five hundred?
No, we're reducing it by seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred.
To, to twenty-five hundred.
Okay. And I actually kind of think that's a good idea, because if, um, we do end up approving in the budget an IT director, you know, hopefully that person would bring expertise around software.
That would be someone who would have a, you know, a better, uh, better coordinate that type of movement.
Okay, so do I have, um, a motion to decrease line item two sixteen in the building budget by seventy-five hundred?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? No? No. Motion carries. Let's see, is there anything else in the budget, building budget?
Yeah, miscellaneous supplies, where we're running this year and so forth like that, I'd be comfortable reducing that by 500 from 3,500 to 3,000, so 500 on, 300 operating costs, line 320, $500.
So reducing it?
Reduce it by 500 to 3,000.
Anyone have objection to that? Anyone want to make a motion?
Move the reduction.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? No. Motion carries. Anything else in the building department? And 105, Town Engineer. This is also a...
That's a reduction.
Reduction. 106, Human Resources. Anyone have any sugest? Yeah. 107, Town Clerk. Anyone have any suggested changes? No. 108, Ledge Light, Health District.
It's a contract.
Yeah. Anything we can do there? 109, Information Technology. So this is the increase, it includes the, um, an IT director position, so that's pretty much the main event in this budget. Anyone have anything they want to change in?
I had two reductions. And the 200 services, I have a line item 218. I had $800 and a 219, $1,400.
So I'm just, so under 218, you're saying, what would you like to propose?
218, 800.
A reduction of $800.
Yeah. And 219, a reduction of 1,400.
Do you want to do that one more time? I can get the second, the second line item more reduced.
219.
219 or 218? 218 and 219. 218 by 800, 219 by 400. What's your reasoning, John?
I just thought that, uh, I read the narrative, I just thought that the increase of, after the 800 reduction of 1,400 would be, uh, rational at some point down, why IT needed more money, they could come before us.
So the additional 1,400 for the backup internet connection to Town Hall when the state network goes down, is that still with, I'm trying to remember the chief's comment about their backup system and would we not be reliant on the state?
As far as, you mean the backup for?
The backup internet connection to Town Hall?
Well, that's, that's actually for the Town Hall.
Yeah.
When, so if, if like everything, like phones, internet, we lose everything, so if we have the backup, then it would enable us to keep running. I mean, everything is by the internet, we lose that capability, we're not able to, you know, do any of our banking or anything like that.
And, and so, um, the backup internet connection is a...
It's another service provider.
And that is a cost that's already been discussed with them or?
Correct.
So, I don't know, John, do you think?
Correct.
I'm just thinking a backup for the internet for Town Hall may be necessary?
What?
For the 1,400 and, and 218.
No, it's 219.
219, sorry.
Yeah, I can go, hold it up. Just, just leave the $800, and 218, and take away the 1,400.
Okay, so the 800. Any, so would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion to reduce, um, IT 109 on 200 services on land 218 of $800.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. 600.
Denise, can I just make a comment regarding the IT director position?
Sure.
I know that we've heard, um, communication from, from the chief and from the Public Works Director that this would be just on, on the town side, but I would like the, the thought for this position to be one that encompasses all of IT in town, including the schools, so that we can get a coordinated effort in terms of vendors, in terms of services, in terms of architecture strategy. For that salary, I don't know that you're going to be able to get that, but that's just a wish list for me, is that we have a unified IT for the town.
I think that would, right now with the discussions having to go too far, but I think if we had someone who is a dedicated individual in a director's position on the town side, then I think that's where we will start looking at the digitizing that we're trying to figure out here now, where we might be able to start communicating what similarities do we can have and stuff like that, because we're a lot, you know, they have a lot of stuff that, you know, that's secure as well, and we do too, but of a different nature. So I think having someone with that background and capability looking from a little higher down, it will move us in that direction you're hoping to see us going.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I'd love to see as much as possible that where we can, you know, do things together as a town, but I, you know, recognize that right now the IT needs are, are very different and you guys are, you know, working out well with, with, but if we brought in an IT director that was very capable and had their own, but I think you're right, we got to start with IT director and then see whether they've got, but I, I agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Oh, sure. And I'm totally supportive of this position. It's a new expenditure, but it's one that's well needed by the town.
All right, you know, I just think of all the, you know, whether it's malware, fraud, all of the different contracts that we have with different service, you know, techno, technology service providers, having someone, you know, looking out for all that, looking at, even if is there, you know, our insurance, is it covering all that type of thing? So it's, I, I definitely agree, it's a position that we need and should have had. Okay, anything else with 109? 110, Registars.
What, under postage, there's an, a increase of, of, they said an additional 1,300 would be needed to complete a fall mailing list to voters in District 2 because this past election, there were 173 people that went to the community center and were told, no, you have to go to Manic Center. I think there's a better way to deal with that right now, so I would like to back out. And here again, if it turns into a problem, we can always look back at an appropriation for that, but I'd like to reduce line 204 under operating expenses from 3,400 down to 2,100, so a $1,300 reduction.
Sounds good.
Makes sense, and hopefully after people voted in November, you know, they will.
Well, I remember a person, she had been at a parent teacher conference in Manic Center, she said, I gotta run up to the community center to vote, and I said, oop, just turn around, you're already here, so it made it a lot easier.
All right, so...
Hold the $2,100 reduction.
Second? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. 600. And Anna, you're on top of all this, right? I can see you busily carrying stuff.
Denise, on line 402, I noted that, um, the Board of Selectmen noted a decrease of $5,000, and I think that that's appropriate.
That was, when I met with the registrars, they were comfortable with that reduction as well.
Okay.
You know, and I also meant to say something under the IT budget, that we are up here and Paul is not only, you know, working on this budget, but he's operating the cameras and everything. So hopefully the IT director will be able to help us out with that, but I also, you know, as I, as I was thinking about that aspect, Paul's been nice enough to do it, but I worry that you're going to be out one day and something happens to you, none of us, I'm not sure, know how to do it, so it might be a more, in the meantime, more fair distribution to have all of us learn how to do it so that we can take turns and it doesn't always fall to one person. In that way, we get to change seats every now and then. So just, I was thinking about that today and before it left my mind, wanted to bring that up. Okay, so anything more with registrars? Judge of probate.
Lauren, you got something here?
Yeah. Christmas would be bleak. Exactly. All right. Maintenance of town buildings, 113. So this is part of the public works, um, sort of overall, this all comes under Joe. You know, I, I know there's a lot of moving parts between public works, maintenance of town buildings, all of those things. I was feeling like I hoped that we could come up with a reduction under, you know, his overall, but not feeling like I know exactly what to suggest there. I don't know.
I've had discussions with Joe and this, he's identified some areas, and this was not one of the ones he identified.
Okay.
Because, you know, with this, we have the brand new building coming online with the, or the public safety building is online now, so, you know, that's an, an increased cost and so forth, so he wanted to hold off on anything in the maintenance right now.
Okay. Anyone have any changes I'd like to make to this? Nope, okay. Move on to general government miscellaneous and benefits. So I know, you know, line item 127, the health dental care, that will be something that we'll be waiting and with bated breath.
Hoping, yes.
And hoping and wishing.
That would help us all out a lot.
Yeah, um, so...
I don't think we can do anything with that, everything else is statutory.
Yeah, but we'll need that, you know, update as soon as we have it, hopefully, you know, before we get to the, um, town meeting. Okay, move on to 115, Services to Community. I know the Board of Selectmen have spoken about recommending sort of a policy as to, you know, when and...
How.
How we decide to make those donations. I was also just thinking, some of these recipients were also, um, due to be awarded, assuming when we meet Wednesday, we approve the ARP committee recommendation, so I know lots of this has been in place forever. The only, the only thing that, um, in lieu of not having a policy, my only suggestion would be, does anyone want to change anything to any recipient that's likely to do to get an award on Wednesday?
You, you read my mind. I, I had thought about this because there are many recipients here of the ARP funding, and, you know, the, these are very small grants that the town gives to the, these services. I, it's something that I'm really not sure, and I welcome other board members' opinions because some of the, the grants were actually fairly substantial from the ARPA funds, and, again, it, it's a perplexing topic.
Yeah, you know, and in the same way that once something gets into a budget, it's hard to take it out, you also worry if you take it out, it'll never come back in again, you know, so.
Right, and you do have the precedent that in 2021, actual expenses, that budget year, there were some organizations that were very kind to the town and said, we can live without it this year. So I, I don't know if the Board of Selectmen or the First Selectmen could approach some of these organizations and see in light of receiving ARPA funds...
I'll be happy to do it, so you'll have that information, because you, you know, if we, you could go back and revisit this on Wednesday night, I'll definitely make sure all those that are awarded or have been recommended for being awarded, I'll reach out to them, that contingent upon that, we might, you know.
And again, this isn't, it's not a, it's not going to move the needle, the total is 26,000, and if we, you know, dropped a few, you know, then we're only talking 1,000 here or there, so it's, it's not a big number.
Right.
So there's a part of me that says, are we complicating this unnecessarily?
It would be about, it would be about 5,000 in total, because, you know, a few in there.
And, and to play the flip side in, in favor of continuing this award of money, the ARP applications were very specific about what they were designating the money for, and this community support from the town east line to these organizations is over and above that. So in light of that and for the, the small dollar figure, just let it ride unless somebody's willing to...
I'll mention it, but, and I'll say, I'll, I'll phrase it, I think you did phrase it really well, you know, this was something above and beyond, and we're asking them to actually, if they don't use all their money for something, to return it to us, so.
Paul, given that you were also on the, do you have any thoughts one way or the other?
Yeah, I was thinking, I think it would be contingent of receiving the ARPA funds, maybe one of, if they're fine with that, just to help us out a little bit.
I'll ask.
Every little bit.
Every little bit, yep. Okay, anyone else want to say anything about services to community? Now we can move to zoning commission, not really much here, the personnel. zoning commission. Not really much here, the personnel, and a zero percent increase. Okay. Planning.
Just in planning, there's a, as you can do under operating expenses, Line 242, professional conventions and conferences, statutory requirements now for training for planning members, so that's why that is a thousand dollar increase.
Okay, wouldn't have anything there. 118, Finance Department. Largely. Personnel. And service contract, we've already gone through that. With the, with Immunis system, so I don't really see anything myself here.
I was looking at that, but between Immunis and the timekeeping system.
Yeah. Everyone good there? Contingency. No, I think this is, will be something that, you know, will be addressed once we get through the contract negotiations, and I know the plan is to stagger them in the future so that we don't have all contracts coming due at the same time.
I've, we've already had a memorandum of agreement with the dispatchers, but that's only six people.
Yeah.
And I've been working with the police department too, for a one-year extension, but we'll be doing, the largest one is UPU, and that's where we've had tremendous amount of problems. We just had another person last week, after eight years, saying, I can't stay here any longer because of the fees and wages for so long, so we have to, gonna have to address that a little bit, so.
Yeah.
That's why there's that contingency.
And then, once we get to the point where they're staggered, the overall amount that would be in a contingency would be less going forward.
Anna? If it turns out that there's monies left in the payroll contingency, would those get transferred into the operating contingency?
It's, it's certainly.
It's a hopeful wish.
Well, it's something that the boards, the boards could certainly entertain, once we get through all of the contracts.
Right. Thank you.
Anyone else? We're gonna move on to Board of Finance. Biggest number is the Audit Services, and we're all for audits, so. Should be okay there. Board of Assessment Appeals.
And that's a reduction because it will not, it won't be a revalue, so they, all they'll have is their quick motor vehicles.
Yeah. So, good there. ZBA, one thirty, that's nothing there. One thirty-two, and then Wetlands. I think that's mainly personnel. I don't see anything there. And if I'm moving too fast, just feel free to speak out.
We're not fast enough.
One thirty-three, Wetland Shelfish Commission, I didn't see anything there. One thirty-four.
If I could, they haven't used the curator position in quite some time, and there, as it says, it does articulate that they're looking for someone for the summer, but I would be comfortable reducing that by two thousand to forty-one eighty, because, you know, here again, maybe a little bit.
Well, I was gonna reduce it by the total, sixty-one eighty. The reason being, in the narrative, they say, if I can find it.
They don't have anyone yet.
Now, it says they're pursuing a curate, will be approaching the local colleges.
Yeah, I have a trouble with that word, pursuing. I mean, it could be you or two.
Well, it's looking for a summer intern, is what they're looking for this year, so that's what they're looking for. And I'd hate if, they could use some assistance in there, you know, strictly, you know, I'd be comfortable cutting it to forty-one eighty, but, you know, at least allow them the ability to move forward.
Okay. So you're gonna reduce it by two thousand?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
So moved?
All those in favor?
Second.
Oh, did we have a second? Sorry.
It's all second.
Peter Seckley. All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Six zero zero. Okay. Town Building Committee, I think we can move past that. One thirty-six, Harbor Management Shelfish Commission. Nothing there. Conservation of Nat, Natural Resources Commission.
There's a, just a, there's an increase in the request for the clerical recording secretary, but they were way down in 2021 for obvious reasons. They didn't meet a lot at the height of COVID, fiscal year, and they're on track to hit about nine hundred this year, so that's why that was increased.
To nine hundred and twenty dollars? Okay, I'm okay with that.
What was the recommendation?
Uh, there is no recommendation.
Oh, okay.
That was just the explanation of that thirty-one percent increase from seven hundred to nine hundred and twenty dollars, so. Yeah. Historic Property Commission. Zero increase. Two fourteen, Public Safety Emergency Management.
And that's contractual for the Director and Deputy Emergency Management Director.
Yeah. Anyone have any? Two fourteen? Okay, move on to two fifteen, Public Safety Dispatch. I know we spoke a lot about the dispatchers. I support this. Anyone have? Any issues? Recommendations? Okay, move on. Two sixteen, Public Safety, Police Department. You know, we, we had a big discussion on this department with the chief. I think, you know, he's working his way to, you know, a long-term plan of his, and we're trying to work on it, but maybe do we get there as faster as he would like us to? I don't know whether, Kevin, you've had any discussions with him?
Mm-hmm. You know, I explained to, you know, with the challenges of budget, he and I've talked, he very much liked the two, as we'd all like to see, I think, but he realizes the challenge there, so he and I have talked about, you know, one and a half positions, because there's two positions in the budget right now. One would be, is planned for lateral transfer, they come in at step three, and then an entry level at step one. And if he did a one and a half, he'd like to have the one, the level three is the one, the one that the half-per person go would be the level one, so we give him a little more flexibility to get someone on and start it right away, which would be savings of about thirty thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars for, and, you know, some, it'd be a little bit in benefits too, but that would be thirty thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars. So, I wouldn't really wanna go much more than that, because then that would impact the whole year. And I think, and if we can stay with that too, what I'd like to, and I've talked to him too, that one of the things he said about now getting some more manpower, you could reduce overtime, he's not comfortable with it, but I said, you know, moving twenty thousand out of, reducing overtime by twenty thousand. If he needed it, as the year progressed, if someone gets hurt or someone like that, or something like that, an unforeseeable thing, he could always come back, but basically, in the, so that'd be out of the salary line, police officers, five-eleven, thirty thousand, two hundred and twenty-two, and out of the overtime line, five-fourteen, twenty thousand.
Then it helps.
So that would be a reduction, a half of?
That would be a half of, a level one, entry level, police officer. Because you, that person, you'd be hiring someone halfway through the year.
Half, okay, that's, yeah.
Yeah, so, by, so next year, that person's already in the budget and that, so you're basically delaying the cost for six months.
Yeah, that's sort of where I wanted to go with this, was not necessarily, I mean, the goal is six more officers over so many years, to kind of slow the process while we're choking on budget.
And that's what the chief talked about, and if we leave the three in there, then he can get somebody, that level three for a lateral, if he finds a lateral and everything works out with the budget that way, then that person can, lateral is, you know, a few weeks in the car, learning the town and so forth, then he's good to go, vice the training process.
For a new one, it's just delayed anyway.
Yeah, because we, we had two in the academy last year because of the one we had authorized, and then a retirement, they, in the last month, they finally are now on their own because of the academy and the training, so it's, it's, you know, it's an eight-month process, eight-and-a-half-month process before they're, start the academy till they're on the road.
So then, what was that final number, the reduction?
It would, you'd be, line number five-eleven, the two million, one hundred and seven, six fifty-nine would be reduced by thirty thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars to whatever number that would be. There's too many numbers for that one, I'm thinking in my head. And five-fourteen overtime, three-thirty, two-thirty-nine, twenty thousand to three-ten, two-thirty-nine.
And then, assuming we go forward with this, Anna, you'd be able to then also adjust the FICA or whatever for, you know, follow-up on that? Do I have a motion?
Could.
Okay, go ahead.
Or do you do the motion, then I discuss, or however you wanna do it?
Start with the motion, and then, and then discuss?
Yeah.
So, do I have a motion? We'll do it, you know, one by one, so, reducing Line Item five-eleven by thirty thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars to phase in the second police officer over the halftime. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved?
Second.
Second? Discussion?
Yes. I, I looked at the presentation that the chief gave, and looked at the crime statistics of the various categories, and the projections for this year, and the amount that we're in 2021, and it looks like our crime is actually, for the most part, going down. And I know that the Police Commission has requested two officers a year for the next six years, or, you know, maybe it's the next four, because they proposed it a couple of years ago. And last year, I felt as though zero, zero new officers. When I looked at the town side of the budget, these positions were the largest amount of money that I could see to get us towards a budget goal, and the statistics in, in my mind just didn't bear out the need to hire more. And I understand that you wanna have officers out on patrol, that it's, it's a proactive type of thing. And I had asked the chief if traffic safety and traffic issues were still the primary, one of the primary concerns of the community, and it sounded like, yes, they were. And there's a line item in Public Works for traffic calming, which are those speed signs, and also painting patterns, et cetera. To me, that seems like a bigger bang for the buck if traffic issues are a big concern in the community. And when you take the salary, plus the benefits, plus the equipment, plus the training, et cetera, it adds up to, you know, a hundred twenty, a hundred thirty per officer. So, my feel is, I would prefer to see zero increases, and.
I'm laughing as two patrol cars with their sirens, lights are going by behind you.
Probably pull my car away right now. It, it's, it's not a comfortable position to be in, but when I look at the bigger fiscal picture for the town, I just didn't see where the evidence was there, that it's a goal of the Commission to get up to a certain ratio per population. And, you know, I think they changed the way that they calculate that now, because some of the ancillary folks, such as the dispatchers, et cetera, are now included, so that instead of being the fifth lowest, we're now the twelfth lowest. And it just, I think, if we're asking the schools to be fiscally responsible, I was very supportive of the communications ARPA grant that the, the police were looking for, and I support the police, but just I think in the fiscal situation we're in, I would prefer zero increase.
Anyone else? Discussion on that?
I'm not quite at zero, but I'm, I like the idea of delaying, and rather than delaying a half a year, delay more, just to bring the cost down, because it's a big, you know, I'm, it's a, it's a huge hit on the budget, and, and I would be in favor of reducing the budget more by delaying at least one of the positions. I, I just, I, you know, when I sat back and looked at it, it's a, it's, it's, you know, I'm in favor of increasing the police force, but I think it has to be done slow.
Any thoughts down here?
Well, I agree with some of what Rich and Peter said.
Take us out.
Last year, we went through this, this debate for quite a while, and there was a few of us who wanted two, addition to two police officers. Some wanted zero, and we ended up having one, which is fine. But some of which are what Rich said about the crimes, there are some things that go up and some things go down. Now, traffic incidents have gone up. The one I, the one I'm most concerned with is drug-related. There's a lot of things that you don't see happening with drug trafficking, overdoses, and I just feel we need two police officers to cover the problems we're having with drugs. And there's other, other issues too, other than drugs, which I'm not gonna get into, but you might know what I'm talking about. Having one to start on level three is fine. I support that, but I support the half, half of one on level one starting in January. I just, I just feel that the town needs the safety, the increased safety of having two, two police officers. You know, round and round, about this last year, we ended up with one. But I think the impact of, it's gonna be minor compared to the total town budget, along with the total of the Board of Ed budget. I just feel we need the two police officers at some point throughout the whole year. So that's where I stand.
I support the first elected and the chief's recommendation for the one and a half.
I also support the one and a half. I do too, you know, it's a big town, and, you know, if we were a smaller town and there were less miles of roads to cover, you know, and we've had all these issues in the state with, you know, the car thefts, we've had, you know, attempted break-ins all down my street, we've got the senior vans being parked at the public safety building now because the catalytic converters are being stolen. So it just, you know, it, it's the whole quality of life stuff that you, you want to, you know, that goes into making sure we keep our residents safe and our properties safe and, you know, whichever measure you're looking at, we're still pretty low of the one hundred and sixty-nine towns in, you know, comparison of police force to residents. So I, I would support the recommendation to phase in the second one. Any more discussion on that? If not, we have a motion and a second. And I don't know, Rich, if, after we vote, if you wanted to, are you looking to make a second motion, or just?
No.
Okay, just want to make sure I get that, you know, straight, if you wanted to take up that question first. So we have a motion on the table, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? No abstentions, so that motion carries for two, so. And so then, the next one would be the recommendation to reduce the overtime by twenty thousand, line item five fourteen. Someone want to make a motion to?
Removed.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No upset, abstentions?
I'll abstain.
You're abstaining, okay. So, motion carries, five, zero, one. Anything else on this, two sixteen budget? So moving to two seventeen, Niantic Fire Department. So this budget also has an increase in line six eleven with firefighters.
I, again, I talked with both the chiefs and Chief Barone. Here again, this would be something I'd like to see brought in, that we can do that halfway through the year as well. And, you know, I get alerts when medical calls go through, since we've been sitting here tonight, there's been three nine one one calls. So, I mean, I think we've seen the call volume going up, this is somewhere I think we desperately, you know, we need somebody, but they're understanding that, you know, waiting till, we could wait off, wait until January to take that. Plus, we're going through contract negotiations, which will give us a better idea of how that person would be phased in and where they would be too. So, because we're looking to do some language changing there too, so I think that makes a little bit of sense to hold off on that, because by then, the contract will be resolved.
So then, it would be your recommendation?
It'd be twenty-eight thousand, ninety dollars. From, so three eighty-six, oh three nine would be reduced by twenty-eight thousand, ninety dollars.
So, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
In the narrative, it looked like the chief wanted two additional firefighters, and you reduce that by one, so that three eighty-six is taking that reduction?
Yes, already, yeah.
In account.
So, and was that, you said two different numbers there, you said twenty-eight thousand?
Twenty-eight thousand, two eight, zero nine zero, from, subtract that amount from three eighty-six, oh three nine.
Okay. Do I have a motion to reduce line item six eleven by twenty-eight thousand, zero nine zero? The second, Peter and John? Any discussion?
I, I kind of would like to see that not be a delay, but actually put into place because of the number of calls that they're getting. The chief is very agreeable to many things, and he had already agreed to a reduction of one firefighter from his original proposal. And I just think with the demands that they have and the number of calls, both for medical as well as fire, that I would just like to see that start and be a start at the year.
Any other discussion? All right, so for the, on the table, do I have a motion to reduce line six eleven by twenty-eight thousand, oh nine oh? I think we did make that, I'm, yeah, I'm losing track. So we've had discussion, call for the vote then, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed?
I'll do an abstention on that.
Okay. And one abstention, so the motion carries, five, zero, one. Anything else on Niantic Fire Department? Okay, moving on to Flanders Fire Department, two eighteen. Any discussion there? Anything from our first selectmen?
No, the only thing is, is you'll see a little jump in this dozen, because, you know, the wages aren't showing there, this is a firefighter who's moving off upper steps, off probation, and so that he gets a pay increase, so that, that we know of.
Probation, sounds like he was being bad.
No, he wasn't being bad. No, having been in law enforcement, your first, usually it's your first year after you've completed your training, you're on probation, which means you're not protected by the unions and so forth.
Got it. All right, so we can move on to two twenty-four, Fire Marshal.
Where we're running right now, I feel comfortable bringing that down to seventy thousand from seventy-five, still gives a little bit more than we've got this year, but we're tracking right at sixty-five, and, you know, I think, public safety building's done, so there's not as much need there and so forth. So I feel comfortable moving line two thirteen from seventy-five to seventy.
Okay.
Removed.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six, zero, zero, to reduce line item two thirteen by five thousand to seventy thousand. Two twenty-six, Public Safety, Animal Control.
If I could, we did have Rob Araro, ACO, come make a presentation, but, you know, I've talked with the chief, we feel that should come through the chief, police commission board to selectman up. Not that he doesn't have a really good idea, and I think he articulated why it's going, but to pop that into now, plus I need to talk to Rob Ruhl, the first selectman in Waterford, because they would be picking up some of that cost. So it might be something that we can work out, but not until the budget's been put to sleep, so.
All right, anyone have anything further for that? Three seventeen, Public Works, Highway and Sanitation.
This is, this is where you would, you know, since I asked Joe, you have a big thing here, if I needed some money, I wanted to let him identify where it came from, and he identified twenty thousand under, Anna, what was the line for?
The road account.
The road, under the road account. He said he could adjust that by twenty thousand.
So line item two twenty-four, Road, Reconstruction, Repair?
Yes. So reduce that from twenty-seven, five to one ninety-seven, five.
Two seventeen, five.
Two seventeen, five to whatever, twenty thousand for that, one ninety.
Also would help. Do I have a motion to reduce line item two twenty-four by twenty thousand?
Removed.
A second? All those in favor, or any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six, zero, zero. Any other items in Public Works?
Yes, it is. As I had mentioned, when we were on the police budget, I'd like to see us maybe double up the traffic calming measures. I think those signs are very effective, plus they collect data to help the police know where they might need to focus more. And it's just, it's five thousand dollars to double that, so.
You know, the first time I was on a public safety committee meeting, we had a bunch of people come in saying, you know, we need more traffic calming measures done to the street, it's, the street is too windy and everybody's going too fast. And then the next group came in, and they said, we need traffic calming measures, our street is too wide and straight, and everybody's going too fast. So it seems like, we're like, oh, maybe you guys should all move, you know? But, you know, people just have to slow down. Going fast does not buy you any time getting to where you want to go, I think, and if you use ways, and you can see, no matter what happens, you get there at the same time, it tells you, so, you know, it's, I know that they say that they're effective, and, you know, I would, I would support that, because I do think people just go crazy. I mean, I remember when I first lived here, first moved here, you had all those, slow down, enjoy our town, and it did just, it kind of gave you that, you know, relaxed feeling, so I, I do agree, we need, everybody needs to slow down, and we hear about that all the time up on, you know, past the high school.
Which unfortunately, we can't put them on the state roads.
Right, but you just hear, it's just, everybody's speeding, so, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to increase line two twenty-five traffic calming measures from five thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? No. That motion carries, six, zero, zero, to increase line item two twenty-five by five thousand. Anything else? Okay. Four eighteen, Commission on Agent. Anyone have anything? No? Four nineteen, Health and Welfare.
That's just our B and A costs.
Yep, nothing we can do there. Four twenty, Culture and Recreation, it's the library.
Decrease.
Yep, decrease, so, good. Four twenty-one, Parks and Rec. Total increase of one point eight two percent. These retirement reflect, anyone have anything there? No?
And here again, the increase in maintenance payroll, you see ten point seven, six percent. That was one of the people that he came on in January, so that obviously is absorbed full time next year, so.
Yep.
It's no increase, just that the person started.
Okay, five twenty-two, Debt Service, that is what it is. Interest.
Vote eliminated.
Ricky heroes. So that was the interest, and five twenty-three is the principal. No, five twenty-two is the principal, five twenty-three. Brings us to Capital.
Capital Outlays, that's where we'll be able to back out sixty thousand, eight hundred? Sixty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars for the garbage truck that we're looking at purchasing with the ARPA money, so that won't, it'll be savings there.
Okay, good, so do we have a motion to decrease, looking, what line item is that going to be?
Seven oh eight.
Seven oh eight, sixty-three thousand, eight hundred for the garbage truck?
Removed reduction.
Should I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries, six, zero, zero. So that brings us to the end of our departmental budgets. And, Anna, I don't know whether you've got a?
Total.
Total from all of them?
Reduction to the amount of one hundred seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars.
And then, it'll be a little bit more because of what we figured the savings in on the benefits.
Yep. Okay. So do you have your calculation going? If we reduce the town, overall town budget by that amount?
By one seventy-nine thousand.
Then where are we in terms of the overall increase? And the, so town only would be?
That town only would be two million, yeah, twenty million, two hundred and forty-three, six ten. No, that can't be right. Trying to go faster now than I paid the price.
So it would be twenty million, one hundred eighty-one thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. So it would be twenty million, one hundred eighty-one thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars for an increase of four point one three percent.
All right. So then, I guess the next sort of step is if we had an amount that we thought that we would be using from what we wouldn't put into the undesignated fund balance of, so what are we saying there? That you thought you'd be comfortable using?
Well, here again, we have to really, we're still weight contingent on some other things, but five hundred thousand plus, possibly an additional five hundred, since we are looking at possibly another up to a million dollar plus dollars in revenue coming in on the twenty-first. That probably won't happen, there are some properties, when you look at them, no one's going to, you know, the town will have to foreclose on it eventually.
So then, if we wanted to keep the overall increase in the budget to just two million, then we're saying two million minus the five hundred thousand, minus the one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and twelve. Am I getting that right? And what number is that?
Yeah, basically, the, you're looking at the overall town budget or the?
I'm looking at, if we, if the overall, the overall town budget, I've got so many numbers in front of me.
Maybe putting town in Board of Ed or just the town?
Yeah, so take the overall town and Board of Ed combined.
Okay.
And if we said, we didn't want to increase all of that together by more than two million, and if we took the, you know, maybe for rounding, just say a hundred and eighty thousand that we just identified in the town budget, and maybe five hundred thousand. So there you're looking at seven hundred thousand.
So the, so you, so the one hundred, let's say, eight thousand dollar decrease and an additional Board of Ed decrease in the amount of five hundred thousand, then the increase in the budget would be at two million, six hundred and seventy thousand.
Two hundred and a mil.
So, more than the three quarters of a mil that folks were hoping for.
And here again, I mean, we still have till Wednesday to adopt, so. And we had looked for two hundred, so we could, like I said, there'd be a little bit more savings in the.
So the payroll tax is about seven thousand dollars, the, you know, the Medicare. And then there'll be, you have to look at the pension and the workers' comp calculation.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that would get us up to, the town side up to two hundred, because, you know, figuring savings of about, you know, possibly about thirteen-tie of it. Another thirteen thousand maybe in savings for benefits, because if, you know, probably really close to our two hundred, maybe a little bit over. And here again, I could talk to, yeah, no one likes to offer, no department has liked to offer up any.
Yeah.
To give them brownie points? Yeah. The undesignated fund balance, without all the extra input, we're sitting pretty close to fifteen percent right now?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I, I just feel, because of some of the things we've heard on the street, and some of the communications that we've received, I would like to tap more heavily into the undesignated fund balance, and try to keep our mil rate increase below the half to maybe a quarter. That's just my thought. Because we do have quite a few people that are on fixed incomes, and like I had said at the very beginning of the evening, the reavow, it's sort of a little bit of, we can do our guesstimates here, but it's still kind of a black box.
And just, because I wasn't sure I heard you correctly, you'd like to keep it between a half and a quarter, or did you say a half and three quarters?
I'd like to keep it to a quarter.
A quarter. And a quarter is, where is that? So a quarter is about a six hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety increase.
That would, I, we'd have to eliminate IT, basically every, every position we had in there would have to go.
Yeah. And I.
And then some.
And I, I think I would just be.
No, I, I, I'm in line with budgets that have been proposed, I'm just thinking, we can dig a little deeper into the undesignated fund balance without.
Maybe, you know, I don't know if tonight, but maybe for your meeting Wednesday, have a much better concrete idea of where the undesignated fund balance is now, how much looks like it's going to go in there, and then what we'll have, because we don't have those, you know, I don't think, give a chance to.
By the time that you have your public hearing, as, on public hearing day, there is a special Board of Finance meeting immediately following that to address any last-minute adjustments that you may want to make to the budget before moving it on to the town meeting. And by the twenty-fourth, we're going to know the result of the tax sale, because that'll happen the week prior to that meeting.
Because even if, because people have six months to, but the town gets the money. I mean, then they have to deal with the person that, you know, paid out that money, so. So we'll, we'll know exactly where we are, we'll have a better idea of it, and, you know, it could be upwards of a million dollars, but, you know.
But what I'm saying is, outside of that, the bonanza of income that we're getting from these various sources, our undesignated fund balance is already at about fifteen percent.
It's very healthy, yeah. And it's shown, and it's, it's grown remarkably over the last several years, and we've, like as I said earlier on, we've seen some really good progress with that. And I think that's, you know, through being fiscally responsible to it, and it wasn't an accident, so.
Right.
But it's also a double-edged sword, sword when it comes to the rating agencies, because they love to see you put money in, but then when you reduce it, that ends up being a red flag.
I'm not saying reduce the number, it's in there, maybe just be less going in, you know.
Yeah, but it's just, you have to be, you know, once it's in there, it's hard to take it out without, you know.
Well, and the other thing you have to remember is, the larger amount that could apply to next year's budget, the bigger hole we're going to have when trying to put next year's budget, you know, subjugate your budget together.
It's, it's a one-time fix. But maybe, given extraordinary circumstances right now, you kind of say, one-time fix, but maybe we just, you know, find a number that works there.
Thanks.
I know you had brought this up a couple of meetings ago, you know, oftentimes people will come and actually present their thoughts during delegations, but sometimes we get an email, and just so that we have that in the public record, I brought along that email from Mike Schultz, who sent this to the Board of Ed, as well as the first selectmen, and was forwarded to all of the Board of Finance. And all, he basically said, in all due respect, I find the budget increase, budget percentage increase for the town and Board of Ed completely unacceptable, especially the Board of Ed. The budget for the town at least serves all the taxpayers, not just the twenty percent of the taxpayers, that at most contribute only about twenty percent towards the cost of enrolling their kids in the Eastline school system, and still they complain. Without even counting the extra support personnel brought in, paid for by the feds, they now want to pass unassociated costs onto the taxpayer. Their chart shows that the student population will decrease by forty-one students in 2023, and they still want two point five million more dollars. I could go on for hours and show where the Board of Ed has failed in transparency and is abusing the taxpayers. It would seem that our leadership and employees don't have an appreciation for what is going on in the world, and that many taxpayers are having to choose between heat and medications. Seven hundred and fifty dollars to fill my oil tank, exclamation mark. The maximum budget increase for the town and Board of Ed should be limited to no more than two percent, and that, in my opinion, is more than we should be sending, spending. The taxpayers have provided funds for school modifications, a new police station, and many wants, enough is enough, I hope other folks will speak up and show their concern, so. Those are his thoughts, given that he mentioned the Board of Ed, certainly happy to have you guys respond, since it was in the, you know, an email to all of us, but you may have already responded to them, so.
Yeah, responded to them, shared some additional information, you know, with him, and he's the only individual we've heard from.
Yep. All right, so. So I think what will happen, at this point, unless someone has something else they want to talk about, is we're going to tighten up some numbers with Anna, we will finish up at the start of our regular meeting on Wednesday with the final deliberation and a vote based upon the updates that we get between now and then. Does that sound like a plan? Does that work? Anna?
You're not going to deal with the Board of Ed budget this evening?
Well, I think, since we, since we're trying to back into a number that we were going to suggest, and it sounded like you were getting some more updates between now and Wednesday, we would have a better idea of exactly what number we'd be looking for. Am I correct in that?
Updates on additional reductions to the general government budget?
I.
No, I think they're telling, well, money regarding possible revenues and stuff like that.
I think.
That's not true, except for this one today.
So, so Wednesday we would have our, we had set aside, if need be, to finalize the deliberations, and I think, I know for me personally, at nine thirty, and throwing a whole lot of numbers around.
Yeah.
I think I would prefer to, you know, get a spreadsheet together, this is what we did here, this is what we're thinking, this is the fine tune, and then have a, you know, if we were to reduce the budget by this much on the Board of Ed side, then this is what the total increase to the town would be and potential mil rate. So it's not so much that I don't want to decide that, I just want to make sure all of us are looking at the exact same numbers and have a clear, which one of these do we want to go with? Does that make sense?
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
I mean, what, the, guys here, the, and based on, you know, what we've been looking at, do you guys have anything for us, or is this, is this, is this your final number? Are you guys able, were you able to look at anything and tweak anything?
Hi, Eric Baumann, the Chair of the Board of Ed, so, you know, thanks and appreciate listening to all this. I mean, I think some context, you know, some numbers, without getting into details, just hearing some of the orders of magnitude that's being discussed. The numbers being discussed are going to be dramat, have a dramatic impact on the Board of Ed, dramatic. You know, we, I don't know, it was two or three years ago, where there was a proposed reduction, and we ended up with, I don't know how many people, four hundred people, and we were there for hours at the Eastline Middle School. The order of magnitude we're talking about here, I have a feeling we're going to be back at the middle school with the same impact. I really, I understand, I work in finance for a living, I understand, I do exactly what you're doing on a different, on the other side from the Board of Ed. The challenge of balancing is really hard. I completely get everything I've heard and everything I said, in trying to figure out what's that right number, and how to manage it. All I, you know, without going to a specific number and going through, are there things we can, yeah, the number of, you know, we're not, you know, zero reduction is not ever ha, you know, never happens, that we're always, you know, there's something that you're going to look at, trying to balance and make it all work, but the orders of magnitude that I'm hearing are, are pretty dramatic and pretty tough, so, you know, happy to, you know, hear more on Wednesday, and, but if we're in that, I don't know, eight hundred thousand or higher, I mean, those numbers, I can't even fathom how we'd find it without dramatic impact. Can we find it? Of course, we're going to reduce teachers, it's going to impact sports, it's going to impact all the things that are going to get parents riled up and back in middle school and having a, you know, a four or five hour meeting, where people line up for hours and go through all the things on why that's not the right thing for the town. So, that's what I, that's, that's my impression of everything, and I appreciate, you know, what you do, I just, just, and you have some tough decisions to make, I'll just say, that order of magnitude is, you know, be ready that there's, there's going to be, you know, there's, there's going to be a lot of parents who get riled up. They're not here tonight, because they don't know that that's what's being discussed, right? They're thinking, hey, it's going to be close, we make it all work, we find some things, Jeff and his team and the Board of Ed, we figure out things to do things differently and, and make it work, you know, each year, but sometimes there's numbers being discussed that we can't just figure it out and cut a little here and do something here, and, you know, the number's being discussed today, I think we're in trouble. Now, I don't know how to manage your job, which is, we're trying to keep the mil rate, and we have all the, we have non-parents, people who don't have children in the schools, who are also trying to figure out how to, how that, so, you know, tough job, completely understand that you're trying to balance that, but that's, I just want to make sure you understand, those order of magnitude are going to be, is going to be really tough on the Board of Ed.
Thanks, Eric. I, I'm just wondering if you guys came in tonight with any kind of Plan B, as Kevin had gone through and discussed with department heads in town, to see where there was some flex and what could be given back, has the board or the school administration started to look to alternatives to that four point five nine? And where are you at in that process?
We have, Rich, we flexed to about two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand. That's where we were at with the flex. As, I think as Eric said, you go over five hundred thousand, you're, we're just going to, there's going to be a large, because I have to let the parents know that, you know, reductions are forthcoming, be prepared for higher class sizes, elimination of different programs, sports would probably be starting to creep into that as well, and the higher you go, you're talking pay for play, other things would come into play, too. So that's where we had, we had flexed, thinking that maybe that's the number, but, yeah, again, you're talking much larger numbers, I totally understand that, and you have a tough job to do, and you do it well, you're diligent in your process, but that's, that's kind of where we're, we're stuck at.
Okay, so just so I heard correctly, you could envision two fifty to three?
Two fifty to three, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
So three to five, that's not that big a difference, so.
Yeah.
When you, when you look at.
Exactly, that's why, you know, exactly, that's why I said going over five, you know, we're really, we're hurting. Yeah, we're going to have an issue, major issue on our hands.
Thanks.
Yeah.
So, you know, I appreciate, Anna, I kind of want to nail this down. You know, I'm certainly up to entertaining an emotion. You know, I'm certainly up to entertaining any motion this evening on a specific number to reduce the Board of Ed budget by. Or, you know, if you guys feel like you want to kind of look at the numbers a little bit more and have that spreadsheet and what it all means, you know, make sure we were, you know, for two days, I don't want, I personally don't want to like jump into something without making sure I've got all the numbers down correctly. But like I said, anyone's free to make a motion at any time. Okay, so then everyone thinks it's a good idea to finalize the amount on Wednesday?
I'd just like to see if we're going to do that, to come back on Wednesday. We have, right now, we have, for the Board of Ed, reductions, we have two at 500, mine at 852, 825. If I'm not mistaken, is one at 830 and then another at 750. And I'm not sure what Peter's was, a number.
He never gave one.
I know. I'm putting you on the spot.
Almost made it, Pete.
I'm putting you on the spot, Peter. Okay, if you can't do it tonight, when we come back Wednesday, can we all have a solid number?
Yep.
Okay. Is that a plan?
Yep, that's a plan.
That's a plan.
Good.
Okay, so I think that concludes budget deliberations. Next is public discussion. Anybody in the public here that'd like to speak? Seeing none, move on to board comments. This is why we make big bucks, guys, you know?
I think you've done a lot of comment, good commenting tonight.
No, I just think it's a tough time of the year for us. And we just got to look at the budget from all angles. We may not all agree on certain numbers, but the way I look at it is we have to think of what the town can afford and what the taxpayers are willing to, you know, to pay as far as increases. I just hope that, last year we came, we had to compromise, you know, Peter, Rich, and myself and the other board members who aren't here, we all did compromise and got to a number. We did our job and we walked out of that meeting with a, a number for the, for the town. And hopefully we can compromise this year and come away, it's not going to make everybody happy, but hopefully we can make most people understand where we're coming from and that we, we did our job and most people will be satisfied. Okay?
Yep, good comments. And, and again, the, this is a tough job, but at the end of the day, it's just going to be a dollar amount that gets passed on to the Board of Ed that we'd like for them to cut. It is completely up to the Board of Ed to make those decisions as to what should be cut. So whether, you know, which programs, which whatever, then that needs to be taken up with the Board of Ed, you know, if they don't like the decisions being made. But, you know, thanks, everybody, for the hard work that, you know, going through this, it's, it's, like you said, it's not going to be easy, but I feel like we've had some really good discussions up here and a great working relationship trying to find the right number, so.
So the 63,800 reduction, that was actually in the capital budget. So I just wanted to clarify the general government reduction is what?
I thought I said 730, didn't I?
So, so the general government budget would be at 20,245,412, 4.45 percentage. And the capital budget would be at 636,860, which is a 6.77 reduction over the super budget. So then, and, I mean, the bottom line is still the same, it's just that.
The line item.
Change in the category.
Yeah.
I just wanted to let you know that.
And so I know you had provided us with a spreadsheet, you know, talking about potential, you know, mil rate increase, decrease, whatever. Is that something that you'd be able to update us with, giving us the ability to plug in different numbers? Or how do you want to go about that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll think about.
Yeah. Okay.
And in addition to that, I, I remember last year, I don't know if it was at the town meeting presentation or during our deliberations, there was what that translated into, let's say somebody had a home at $250,000 evaluation, as to what their increase in taxes would be with that mil rate change.
Well, that's going to be difficult because if you, if you were in that range of 250 last year, it could be 300 or 350 this year. So that, and, and like, it's not a simple math where everyone whose house was, who had a house valued in that $250,000 range is going, their, the increase is going to be the same.
Right.
Because they're going to be all over the place.
Well, could we use that average 24% increase on single family homes and just explain this is just what the average was? Your experience, you know, could be different.
It's a rough guesstimate and it may not apply to everybody.
Yeah, I think that, maybe Denise, you and Anna can sit down and come up with some type of a, a presentation. It gets, and here again, you tell people, there's a lot of things, but this is roughly what you could expect.
Or, I mean, it's, I think it's actually easier said than done as well because some individuals, the mortgage company pays their taxes, so they're, they're maybe not as in tuned to their assessed value because they're not receiving their individual bill where we could just say, what you need to do is take the value that was on your tax bill last year and the value that was on the communication that you received during the reval process and you do the math on and you can see the differences. Because it's, like I said, it's just not as simple as that.
Yeah.
Just if I paid 5 last year, what if I expect to pay this year, something as simple as that?
Just kind of a rough figure.
Yeah, that's just it, if I pay.
They qualify it.
5,000 last year, what am I going to pay this year? The mil rate will drop, but my taxes are going to be, yeah, I'll be paying more.
One question, Kevin. Town meeting, you had where everybody came up, it was like three or 400 people. They were there till like 1, 2 o'clock in the morning.
That was, that was the public hearing on the budget.
Now, who legally is allowed to come up to the podium? Because I understood a little while after that, there were a lot of students, students aren't allowed to speak. Supposedly it's only taxpayers, is that correct?
Let me have a good answer for you. I'm not positive on that because I know that question came up and I, I'll research the answer so you'll have that Wednesday night.
And also if there's a time limit on.
You can set a time limit too.
There was a five minute time limit, but we had a couple of people there, we were shouted down saying, I'll speak as long as I want.
Well, here again, you know, you, you know, one of the things, you hope it never comes to this, but, you know, is they, you can put a limit on, on how long it goes to a public hearing. As Tom Hennig said with the FOI, you know, that FOI hearing, there's certain limits. In fact, even the delegations and public comments, those aren't required, but everybody does. Yeah, and, and they should, I mean, that's definitely, people should have the right to speak. But I remember a couple of times we had, when I chaired the Board of Ed, we had some, a presentation with the extended school day where we gave everybody five minutes, one person went, so some went, so. Everybody had to sign up ahead of time, so you knew how many people were speaking.
Yeah.
And one person said, okay, I'll yield my five minutes, so, okay, we did. But at, at that time, you stopped them, you know, and that's just, you know, you know, let's hope that doesn't happen, you know.
But it was mostly students that spoke.
It was.
Yeah, it was a lot, too.
The teachers prepped the students to.
Yeah.
That was very clear.
I do think if, I do think it is good though, from a student's perspective, to show up and advocate. And I'm not saying in that form, but I do wonder if students can't speak. Is there some way we can allow them to, I, I, I don't know what that is, looks like, but I, I don't want to discourage students from taking part in.
Well, yeah, the thing is, and that's a tough thing too, because if someone, if you're a resident of the town, you can speak, you don't have to be a, you, you don't have to be registered to vote. You know, we say, you know, you state your name and address, I live here, and you can say I don't, I'm not registered to vote. That doesn't disco, you know, discount you or, you know, prevent you from speaking under public comment. So let me just make sure I can find out. I'll, I'll call Tom Hennig at FOI and get an answer because it's better to have a, a good, solid answer to that. And here again, I don't think we want to deny.
I don't want to discourage students speaking, but when you have 100 taxpayers and teachers coming up and speaking and you've got 300 or 400 students.
Well, here again, too, you could, you could, you know, maybe there's a way, you could say, look, I'm representing these 20 people and we all are on the same page here or something like that. Because, you know, because if you're at 1 o'clock in the morning, eventually people are tired, they get cranky and, you know.
I was cranky.
Tired, tired and cranky always brings out the best in everybody, we know that, so. But, you know.
And Denise, that's where you see people driving quickly.
Yes.
So we need your signs.
Here, have I forgotten anything else? This is normally where I've forgotten an item and I go to adjourn. Well, do I have a motion to adjourn then?
It's moot.
All those in favor?
All right.